We will now call a common council meeting of March 16th, 2021 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Lorik.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Everybody, please rise for pledge of allegiance. Chris, would you start us off?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbreakable, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we do the minutes, I will ask the clerk to read in the notice of video conferencing, please.
Certainly. The City of Oak Creek is authorized to hold this public meeting remotely during the COVID-19 public health emergency. This meeting being conducted via Zoom video conference with telephone conferencing capabilities was duly noticed per the City of Oak Creek municipal code and statutory notice requirements more than 24 hours in advance of the meeting. This meeting may also be viewed at the city's YouTube page, the link for which was contained in all four mentioned notice methods. The meeting recording will be also accessible on the city's YouTube page within 48 hours. When unmuted, all participants must state their name and address for the record, then proceed with comments or questions. Questions and comments may also be entered into the Q and A function within the Zoom webinar control panel. Staff and/or moderator will monitor this function during the meeting and provide the information requested. There is one public hearing scheduled as part of this meeting. After the mayor announces a public hearing, staff will read the public hearing notice into the record, state that the hearing is open and subject to the meeting procedure, and provide a brief overview of the proposal. The chair will then proceed with the hearing by making calls for public comment. Following the third call for public comment, the chair will close the public hearing and proceed to consideration of the remaining agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Catherine. That will get us to item three, and that's approval of the minutes of March 2nd, 2021. If everybody's had a chance, take a look at them. When you're satisfied, there's no errors, omissions, corrections, discussion, motion, please. Kirkowski make a motion to approve the minutes of March 2nd, 2021. Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye. Item four gets us to our first public hearing of the night. It is consideration of a right-of-way vacation for discontinuing a part of Orchard Way as shown on a certified survey map. Catherine, when you are ready, please read that into the record.
Certainly. This resolution was introduced by the common council of the City of Oak Creek on February 2nd, 2021, and proposes the discontinuing and vacation of the public street right-of-way in the City of Oak Creek. The legal description, they're fouls. Part of Orchard Way is shown as certified map, number 7769. The property owners are DM Investment Real Estate, LLC, property address 8100 South 27th Street, and DM Investment Real Estate, LLC, 8100 South Orchard Way, Oak Creek, Wisconsin, published the 10th day of February, 2021.
Thank you, Catherine. And with us is Doug Seymour, Community Development Director. Doug, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Doug Seymour, Director of Community Development for the City of Oak Creek. This is a public hearing on a request to vacate right-of-way in the southeast and southwest one quarter of Section 18. The property is at 8100 South 27th Street and 8100 South Orchard Way. And I'm going to share my screen just to give it an exhibit for you. You'll bear with me. So on your screen, you see an aerial showing the properties and mention the public hearing. If you can see my cursor, you can see that the existing right-of-way that was dedicated essentially dead ends into a county ownership of Falk Park, and as such, was not really feasible for developing. And in conjunction with the proposed development of these properties, the staff worked with the applicant to develop a road pattern which conforms to a logical extension of South Orchard Way in connection with the state's access management plan for South 27th Street, which ultimately shows this roadway going all the way up to Drexel Avenue and making connection west to a signalized, or an intersection rather, with 27th Street at Believitz Villa Drive. So, in essence, the existing right-of-way that was dedicated really wouldn't have worked for any future development of this property. And as such, as part of the preliminary steps in the development of this property, this right-of-way is being vacated. And the next item, not the next item, but a future item on this same agenda, will have a certified survey map which dedicates the new right-of-way, which you see in that dash line. So this is a public hearing, and actually, this was introduced at a meeting of the common council, I believe, in February of this year, February 2nd, at which time it was laid over to this public hearing. So this, again, being a public hearing, I would ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed vacation of this right-of-way, to please indicate that to the moderator. And once you're called upon, please give your name and address and proceed to address your questions or comments to your staff or to the council. Public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. And as Doug said, we will make three calls. This will be the first. Kevin, is there anyone in the queue?
We have David Decker.
If Mr. Decker would like to speak, that'd be great.
David, it should be able to speak, if I meet yourself on your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thanks.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. 250 North Sunny Slope Road, Suite 290 in Brookfield, Wisconsin, 53005. I'm the developer of the subject site, and I'm just making myself available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Appreciate that. This will be the second call. I am getting no one in the queue. Third and final call. And again, no one in the queue. Now close the public hearing and go on to item five, which is a resolution considering approving that vacation and discontinuing of that street on Orchard Way. So we'll go right to the council. Questions? Comments? Greg.
Alderman Lorik, Second District. This falls within my district. I haven't received any calls or questions, concerns regarding this. And I think most of the questions were asked during planning when we discussed this, so...
I think so. Makes quite a bit of sense. Any other comments, questions, in other districts? Okay, seeing none, we'll move for a motion.
Clerk moves that the council adopt Resolution Number 12226-020221, a resolution vacating and discontinuing part of a 60-foot-wide public street Orchard Way in the southeast quarter and the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 18, Township 5 North, Range 22 East.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
New business. Item six, consideration of a motion to approve a plan of finance for $16,350,000 note anticipation notes and $3,945,000 taxable obligation promissory notes. Andrew.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I would like to turn it over to Assistant City Administrator Max Gagin, as well as Justin Fisher from Baird, is here tonight, our consultant on these types of matters. So if you don't mind getting the floor over, we'll go through.
Doubt, doubt, they are the experts. There you go.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Common Council, Max Gagin, Assistant City Administrator and Controller. So before you tonight is the plan of finance, which is to fund five projects under two separate debt issuances. The first is a $16,350,000 note anticipation note, and this is related to two capital projects in TID 13 along the lake shore. The first is to phase infrastructure and amenity costs related to the Lake Shore Commons project as outlined in the proposed finance development agreement with the developer of Street Group, as well as $1 million for soil remediation costs for the former Peter Cooper property. These are being issued as a note of anticipation note with the thought of refunding them and issuing a geo-refunding bond in 2024. And the second debt issuance is a taxable issuance of just shy of $4 million for three purposes. The first is to refund and to pay off a tax increment revenue bond with Wispark LLC for development of the Oakview Business Park in TID 8, and that amount is $588,000. The second purpose being to pay off principal and accrued interest for a second tax increment revenue bond with One West Drexel LLC for TID 11, and that amount is $2,420,000. And third is to fund a developer grant for the expansion of the Frederick Drexel Town Square Health Center in TID 11, and that amount is $852,000. And with that, I will turn it over to Justin Fisher, Director of Public Finance with Baird, who will walk you guys through greater detail of the plan of finance and answer any questions the council may have.
Great, thank you, Max. Welcome, Justin. We'll need your name and address, please.
Justin Fisher, Baird Public Finance, 6040 North Lake Drive, Lake Fish Bay. So thank you for having me. It's truly, truly great to be here in person presenting to you tonight. It's a pleasure for me, for one, but, and thank you, Max, for making that introduction. Tonight, what I'll go through is a market update of what's been going on in the municipal bond world over the last, really, six months. It's been very interesting. We'll go through the timeline for these different proposed financings Max mentioned. We'll go through the details of the two borrowings, and we'll talk about the financing illustrations in a little bit of detail and finish off with the general obligation bonding capacity. So in front of you, in your packets, you should have the presentation from Baird, and I'll just kind of walk through that page by page. And to start things off, I'll give that municipal market update. So really, over the last six months, ever since the election, there has been, I guess you could call it optimism with the COVID vaccine, but at the same time, there's been a lot of variance that have caused concern. So there's been definitely a mix of optimism and concern, which is kind of throwing the financial markets for a little bit of a loop here. Over the, you know, over the last few weeks, we've seen it where the stimulus has come into play, so there's been a lot more money thrown into the economy, which starts bringing up inflationary concerns. You factor that with, you know, the optimism of continued COVID vaccines being put in people's arms, you start to see, you know, a little bit more optimism, and optimism typically means a little bit higher interest rate. But we get to a point where you get to a little bit higher interest rate, and the stock market's going to react a certain way as well, because higher interest rates, well, then it's maybe not as safe to be in the stock market, and let's, you know, go to the higher interest rate fixed income debt. And so what we're seeing right now is interest rates go up, stock market drops. Interest rates drop, stock market goes up. And so we're kind of in an interesting time right now, but it's kind of to a balancing point right now, and that's kind of where we are. But for the first few months, it was definitely a kind of a roller coaster ride seeing what was going to happen with interest rates in the stock market. So to kind of go through the timeline for this proposed financings, really, tonight, it's gone through the plan of finance, gone through the parameters resolutions, and really getting the approval to, from you to move forward with the plan of finance. So the authority for the parameters resolution would be given to the city administrator or the assistant city administrator comptroller. And this is similar to practice to what the city has done in the past, and it really allows for us to be able to access the markets when timing is optimal and between board meetings, because if there's certain, there's certain factors that potentially may not make it optimal to be in the bond market on a particular day, and we want to avoid those days. We want to get you the most demand on a particular day, and so that gives us the flexibility to do so. So the preparations are currently underway for the issuance, the official statement, the bond rating. So this year, we're taking it a little step further. Typically, we have a rating call where, you know, Andrew's on it, Max will be on it, Jamie. And what we do is we go through the financials of the city and talk about why the city is in such a strong financial shape. This year, we're going to be doing a little bit more in-depth of a presentation to them, where it's going to be a PowerPoint presentation. We're going to go through all the positives of the city, talk about the financials and so forth, and really, you know, show them that the city's in excellent shape and that they have, you have a AA2 bond rating by Moody's, one of the strongest bond credit ratings you can have, and we want to maintain that bond rating. So that's what we're doing. And then the marketing occurs shortly thereafter. And then if the market is strong and meets council's parameters, we're anticipated to lock in these interest rates come April, but it'll be a little bit dependent on the projects and so forth. And then closing would occur roughly about 30 days thereafter. So the borrowing structure and purpose, the first one, $16,350,000 for the note anticipation notes. This, again, to fund the TID number 13 projects, which is the Lake Shore Commons and Lake Shore North Block Peter Cooper Soil Projects. And the structure is April 1, 2024, with capitalized interest being paid through April 1 of 2022. And we'll go through why that makes sense on the following pages. This will be callable April 1 of 2023, so on that particular day, you can take it out and restructure, and based on the revenues of the project and so forth, we can customize it to match that revenue stream at that particular time. The estimated interest rate for this financing is a 1.39%, and the parameter rate would be a 2.25% to give enough cushion so we don't have any problems over the next month. The next one would be a $3,945,000 taxable general obligation promissory note for the TID number eight project, Oakview Business Park payoff, and TID number 11 project, the Frederick Expansion in Drexel Town Square payoff. This would mature, or this has a structure of April 1 of 2022 to 2031, with the first interest payment being April 1 of 2022 and callable April 1 of 2028, with an estimated interest rate of 2.16%. The maximum parameter would be a 3.00%. So going to the next page, I won't go into this in too much detail, but some of the highlights I do want to hit is that on the left side of the page, this is the anticipated tax revenues from the different projects. So as you can see on the left side, really, in 2024 is when the city anticipates getting a fair amount of tax revenue from these future projects. And that's where we're structuring this financing around, is really having capitalized interest because you don't really have the revenues until 2024, taking it out in 2023 with the first interest payment on the longer-term bonds in 2024 to kind of match up with the anticipated revenues. Now, if those revenues come in better, we may be able to, you know, shorten up the long-term financing. But again, that's something we're going to look at later, once we know more facts. Also, in this plan of finance, we factored in what future hypothetical borrowings related to this lake shore area might be. So we factored in everything and pretty conservatively in the future, and as you can see on the far right, the net revenues, the available after debt service and administration costs, you can see that, you know, if all goes well as projected, there's about $8.9 million at the end. So that's a very positive thing that we're seeing, and again, we're using very conservative future interest rates. So it could end up way, much better, put it that way. So going to page four, this talks about TID number eight and TID number 11. This one is going to be structured, as you can see, for a 10-year financing, and really, the goal here is the last three maturities in there, you can see, we're making sure that those are callable, meaning we could restructure, refinance, payoff if certain revenues are coming in, and it gives us the flexibility to do so into the future. So we're making sure that those maturities are callable. The TID number eight, you can see that we're amortizing over the next several years because that TID, TID's life basically ends at the beginning of 2029. So we didn't want to have debt go beyond the life of the TID. But the other ones, you can see that they're amortized over a 10-year period. Now going to the last page of the presentation, this is just, again, I show this to you every time, but this is to ultimately give you comfort as the city is continuing to grow at a very high pace, that allows you to have a larger general obligation bonding capacity. So again, municipalities are allowed to borrow up to 5% of your equalized valuation. The valuation for the city is about $4.2 billion, so over $200 million in available capacity. At the end of 2020, the city had about 54% remaining capacity, which is very good. At the end of these borrowings, so once we factor in the existing debt service, plus the future hypothetical borrowings that we were showing you here tonight, and in the future for the Lake Shore Commons projects, you can see that you still have plenty of capacity going forward, because ultimately, every year, you're paying off debt at the same time, and you're growing. So those two combinations allow that capacity number or percentage to increase year over year. So it's really to give you comfort, and this assumes a 1% growth factor. As we all know, the city's growing at a much higher rate than 1%, but it's to be conservative.
That, that's it. Okay. Questions from council, comments? Steve, nothing?
No, it was very well explained. Thank you.
Okay. Richard's still looking over. Can anything?
Oh, just appreciate the flexibility and creativity with the cash flow projections and the planning of the debt issuance.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Mike, some stuff going on in your district. Any questions?
Yeah, on the, of course, on the lakefront, Lake Shore Commons. On the Phase 1 infrastructure cost, on that $15 million of that, that's the figure for the first borrowing, is that the agreement with F Street, is that, what type of financial commitment have we got, or guarantees do we have built into that?
So that's really important and something we wanted to bring up. We will not sell the debt associated with that project until your council executes the finance development agreement, which will have all of those protections. And so if there's anything on the biggest amount here, in a very awesome project, if there's anything that could delay these timelines a little bit, it would be us finalizing that. You know, we anticipate having that finance development agreement probably at your second meeting in April. We're working through some of the finalities of it as we speak, kind of on a daily basis. So we would certainly execute that, knowing the protections to the taxpayers and what the council is, you know, buying into before we sell that debt in the market.
Anything? Chris?
No, thank you.
Okay. No, it was very detailed, and again, it's, you know, it's a high dollar amount, but it really positions us well for the future, without a doubt. And I think this illustrates it just great. I don't know if general public got it on a PowerPoint, but excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions, we'll go for motion on six.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the plan of finance for $16,350,000 note anticipation notes and $3,945,000 taxable general obligation promissory notes.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Melissa, to clarify, vote on this or abstain? Vote. Aye.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Okay. Item seven also pertains to finance, consideration of a resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $4,100,000 taxable general obligation promissory notes. Max got this one? Or, oh, Max?
So Max Gagin, Assistant City Administrator and Comptroller. So items number seven and eight are two parameters resolutions related to the plan of finance. So the common council just adopted the plan of finance, and these two resolutions are codifying the parameters for which the city administrator, as well as assistant city administrator, comptroller can authorize the sale. With that, I'm happy in answering questions the council may have.
Questions for Max? Anybody? I'm seeing none. We'll move for motion on seven, please.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 12236, a resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $4,100,000 taxable general obligation promissory notes, Series 20218.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Abstain.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
And item eight is consideration of a resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $17 million general obligation promissory notes and authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale not to exceed $17 million. I don't know if Max needs to come up, he kind of covered it in the last one. Are there any questions, guys? Okay, seeing none. Motion on eight, please.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 12235, a resolution authorizing issuance of not to exceed $17 million general obligation promissory notes and authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $17 million note anticipation notes, Series 20218.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Abstain.
And item nine is consideration of a resolution approving the partial termination and release of easement between the City of Oak Creek and Oakview Industrial Property 5 LLC. Melissa.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Hello, council. This is pretty straightforward. Bottom line is, we are proposing that council approve a resolution to have a termination and release of this easement. It was a placeholder that came up in terms of due diligence now, because there's a sale contemplated from Wispark for this lot to Dickman. So, other than that, if there's any questions, the recommendation from staff is to approve of this so that they can proceed and have clear title to the property.
Questions from Melissa? Okay, seeing, seeing none. Motion.
Gale will move to approve Resolution 12233-031621, a resolution approving the partial termination, release of easement between the City of Oak Creek and Oakview Industrial Property 5 LLC.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
That will get us to item 10, and it's consideration of a resolution approving the Second Amendment to the Tax Increment District Number 16 Finance Development Agreement with Ryan Business Park. Melissa, you got that one, too?
Sure. Andrew can supplement anything, but it's pretty straightforward, as outlined in the council report. Bottom line is, we are coming back essentially to adjust a couple of dates here in our agreement with the developer. Bottom line is, COVID, as you know, contributed to certain delays, but this is a developer that's been in constant contact with staff and communications from their council to me in terms of any delays and requests for, I guess I would say generally, assistance in terms of keeping things moving. And I would submit, from my perspective, things have been continuously moving best they can. There's a lot of pieces to this project, and I think that based upon all of that, staff's recommendation is to proceed with this amendment, and that means that the infrastructure is estimated to be complete by June 30th of this year. That's the general infrastructure as defined in our finance development agreement. And then, as indicated in the council report, the park remainder site work is extended out a bit further by November of 2023, though it certainly could be complete before then. Just really anticipating seasonally and the things that need to be done, so...
Just a little more background, this is obviously part and parcel of the Ryan Business Park LLC finance development agreement, and kind of tied in to that was the development agreements with Amazon, as well as their landlord, Hillwood. There was about $2.8 million of other infrastructure costs that were unrelated to the Amazon building for the remainder of the park, the business park. We're really, we've really spent most of that money. We're really, we've really spent most of that money, uh, so there's, there's, there's not too much outstanding there. Uh, and just for some, I don't know, for some surety here, the Amazon valuation came in such that we're not taking that park remainder debt out any further than we need to. So while 2023 seems like a long time, there's only a, a few hundred thousand dollars left of, of the amount to spend. And, uh, it's already, already basically covered by the Amazon increment because that gets paid first before any pay go for the Amazon deal, just as a little bit of a reminder there. So we really don't have any concerns with this is what I'm getting at.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, seeing none. Motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Gail, we'll move to approve resolution 12234-031620, a resolution approving the Second Amendment to tax incremental district number 16 finance development agreement with Ryan Business Park.
Mayor, may I, sorry, the agenda is wrong, Alderman, Gail. Um, it just should be a resolution 12234-031621. Instead of 20. Would you so amend your motion? To that number? Thank you.
You have a second with the amendment?
Kozak, you'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye. Mayor, should that have been also for item nine also?
It was read off.
Oh, it did say nine. I knew it was, okay, I'm sorry. I heard you. Yeah, that was 10. Correct? That was 10, but nine had the same.
Nine was read correctly.
Oh, it was.
Corrected. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Better to check than not. Thank you. Item 11, consideration of a resolution extending the public health emergency in the city of Oak Creek in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus effective April 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2021. Andrew?
It's amazing how quick 60 or 90 days can go because we're back having this discussion again. And I know there's probably some feelings on this one way or the other. And, and largely the staff will defer to the council on, and its wishes here, but just a little bit of background. Um, I did some checking with some of the other Milwaukee County communities to see where they're at with their declarations. And Melissa can probably supplement this as well. It's, it's pretty much a mixed bag. There's a handful of those who have evergreen declarations where they're in place until the council or board chooses to rescind them. There's three or four of those out there. Uh, the city of Greenfield is extended, has extended theirs through the end of May. Commentary is they probably won't be extending it past that point, but that's for their full council to, to decide, of course. Um, and then a few of them have, have in the last several handful of months have let these expire. So we don't know if there's any sort of consequence to not having a declaration in place, emergency declaration in place. Obviously, the city is, you know, penciled in to get a significant amount of money, given the American Rescue Plan that was passed and signed by the president. Uh, I personally don't have that much faith in the federal government or maybe even the state government to, to want to, um, somehow maybe jeopardize that money, but it doesn't seem like that is the case, just for some general background there. Uh, however, if you look at what have the consequences been with this being in place, it, it's been largely not non-consequential, as we've talked about at, uh, the last few of these. You know, I don't think there's been any, you know, liberties taken by the mayor or the staff, you know, using this emergency declaration, uh, for some, you know, unjustified or uncommunicated need. So, um, you know, the resolution states putting this out again to June 30th of 2021. You had some discussion on this when it was extended to, to the end of this month. Anticipate that you will again, but, um, I guess communities have done other things. I only looked at communities in, in Milwaukee County. Certainly there's other, you know, other communities in the state of Wisconsin who haven't had these in place for a very long time or maybe even ever, um, certainly. Uh, but I just wanted to bring out, you know, what other folks were doing and, and just stress that. And I know there's probably some public safety folks on the call, and I see Chief Kresic and Chief Anderson are on the call. If you wanted to hear from them, um, we just don't think that there's too much of a consequence for extending this. Um, we, we think we're hopefully trending in the right direction in terms of vaccination availability. And it just seems like we're, you know, hopefully first and goal on the, on the five yard line. And, and why wouldn't we, you know, round out another extension of this to, to hopefully, hopefully see this, this thing through with, uh, mass vaccination? So not anything we're extremely emotional about, but I thought you wanted a little bit of commentary and background on that before you had your, your discussion.
Appreciate it. Uh, before we start, Chief Anderson, Chief Kresic, anything to weigh in on? From PD Fire?
Hey, good evening. Chief Kresic here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Very good. I would just reiterate with the seat administrator I had stated in regards to this, you know, certainly the phase of the pandemic leads us into a, a portion where the vaccinations are becoming key, and it is a very large scale project. Uh, you know, hopefully we are on the downside of this and, and moving ahead. Uh, and certainly the impact of maintaining the order, as the seat administrator had alluded to, is, is organizationally minimal, but it does allow us some flexibility to adjust as necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Chief Anderson, anything?
Hey, this is Chief Anderson. I would reiterate what, what has been said. I think we're getting near the end and we have, we do have masks. They're ramping up for even a larger vaccination number. So, um, if this is tied to anything for funding, which we don't know, I, I just agree with seeing it to the end, uh, through this. Um, it, because again, it's really not having a significant impact on how we're operating on our daily jobs in the community. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Chief.
Uh, could I add just one other?
Sure, Andrew, go ahead.
I, I think, you know, I, I spoke that there wasn't a ton of consequence to extending this, uh, or, or maybe even flip side, not having one. I think something else to consider. You know, if we, if we don't have this emergency declaration be extended for any length of time here, we, we need to be prepared. The council needs to be prepared to taking the steps to go back to regular meetings and not having, you know, having the public here. The Zoom, uh, kind of platform that we've been using for these meetings, for public hearings, et cetera, was really a, um, a, a, a child, I guess, a child of the offspring of the pandemic itself. You know, we probably need to begin looking at, you know, working with the library board to, to open services at the library. So in, in, you know, I don't want to, uh, you know, retrace my steps, but I think there are certain things you need to bear aware we should be doing without this declaration. And, you know, maybe, maybe another, uh, period of time, let's, let's kind of everything settle down to, to a, a degree where those dominoes can start to fall for us as a city organization. Um, but again, you know, that's, that's going to be your call, and we defer to, to you gentlemen.
Yeah. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Chiefs. Uh, opening up, Steve?
I, I don't have a heartache with going another three months for the following reasons. I, finances aside, it just, to me, it just shows that we're still in this, uh, this environment. Although I would like to see us start gradually moving into areas where we have live meetings and, and more people being told that they can't come into the building for these meetings. I think we've learned so much over the past year that, that most of the boards could probably have a live meeting and not have an issue. I think, uh, also by having this declaration, I mean, we just don't know what the governor's going to do at the end of this week on the 20th. I understand is, is his next, uh, his next step. And gee, I'd hate to say no to this and then have to come back and do something because he's done something that just triggers more local, local stuff. And if by, and if just by, if perception is, is, is there that we're, we're, we've got this emergency order in place to, we got this, uh, the COVID vaccination clinic in Cudahay, and if it ties into that somehow, whether it really does or just the perception that it does, it, it's not really anything harmful. I think in three months, hopefully, we can put this behind us and, uh, still keep precautions in place and, uh, and move forward, uh. So, and by the way, I was, I went to that clinic a week ago Tuesday, and that place is a model of efficiency, by the way, up there. So this, it's phenomenal the way they're, they got that set up. So that's all.
Also, Steve, uh, Rich, anything?
Um, my only comment is, uh, I recall at the, the last time that this was up for a vote, I was the one that was in favor of extending all the way through June 30th. So, you know, my, my feelings are the same this time around. I mean, uh, no major consequences, uh, for extending through the 30th. And I, Andrew, I'm glad you brought up that point about if we don't, that we would have to put into place, you know, new protocols allowing people into the buildings. And I don't know if we're quite prepared socially for, for that yet. So, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of extending the emergency.
Thank you. Mike?
Well, I'll start with a question for Andrew. Are we concerned about, when you mentioned the financial part of it, are we concerned about money that was already allocated to us or future money?
So it's a little bit, it's a little bit of both. We're, we have grants in play right now for testing supplies, for the testing, uh, sites that we, you know, we're, we're kind of moving into the vaccination phase. We have grants in place right now for the vaccination clinic in partnership with our, our local adjacent communities. So there's that, but the big dollar is coming as part of the American Rescue Plan. Max and I have a teleconference, uh, the league is putting on, on that on Friday, but that's a big sum of money. And, you know, I can do some reporting out on that and writing to you. And, you know, I don't think we, we exactly know how that filters down from the feds to the states to the localities, the local municipalities yet. And what we are scared of is what we don't know. Uh, we don't think that that's tied to any, you know, it's probably not in the federal legislation that thou shall have an emergency declaration in place at the local level to get that money. But as I, as I pointed out earlier, though, really personally, the only level of government I, I actually put a lot of faith in is the local level here. So I just, we just don't want anything to get wonky, and it very likely will not. And this may not have any consequence if we were to not, you know, be without a, a declaration. Uh, but we just want to err on the side of caution.
Well, my original statement on this, when I saw it on the agenda, was I don't support extending it because I'm seeing numbers right now that are so low and ridiculous, ridiculously low. I mean, I'm seeing 200 to 300 cases in Wisconsin, with 72 counties. That's what, uh, three, three to four cases per county? Those are the daily numbers we're seeing lately. So I don't really see a need for this, but, but when you raise the question as to if it would affect future funding, that, that puts me kind of on the fence here. I, I really don't know what kind of call to make, but practically speaking, and the way, the way this, this thing is trending with numbers, and even our, even our own federal government under a new Democratic president says by sometime in May, we're going to have vaccine available for just about anybody that needs it. So that's coming from the Fed, the head of the federal government. So I, I don't know. I just, I, I don't support it, but it, I guess my next question would be if there is something in this new rescue package, the, the recent bill that was passed, could the council come back and, and do a, uh, a re, well, I, I understand what, what you're saying about the library opening and, you know, it, I don't know. It's between a rock and a hard place.
Our American, our American Rescue Plan allocation as we know it today, and again, w- once we get that in the door, uh, then we'll, you know, we'll write home about it. It's about 3.6 million for the city of Oak Creek. Obviously, there's certain uses for that, those funds and et cetera. I don't, again, th- there's probably no consequence to those dollars, those large dollars coming into the city, whether or not we have this or not. Uh, but we, we, we just don't know, you know, bureaucracy can get in the way of a lot of things. And, you know, it's a good point that you made, uh, Mike Alderman-Toman, because I've thought about the same thing. You know, you hear different things about, you know, when, when will the, everybody who wants a vaccine have the ability to get a vaccine? And we've heard that, you know, 60, 90 days, June 1. And, you know, this, this timing does dovetail nicely with that, you know, as we're, the government is getting its logistics together. You know, those, those vaccinations, that process is only going to improve from here on out, hopefully. Uh, because, you know, we've, we've worked out the early kinks. So, you know, that does dovetail nicely to, to this timeline with the timeline we're hearing on those vaccinations as well. So something to consider there.
That being said, I guess, um, I'm going to go back to my original position and, and say I would not support this. I'd like to see things open up. So that's my opinion. In fact, I definitely want to hear what the rest of the council has to say.
Andrew?
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Uh, Danny, um, appreciate what the rest of the folks have said. I'm in a camp, I'm, I'm giving what is kind of, I see percolating with, uh, vaccination plans. I see, uh, the fact that teachers have had their first round of C-SoChews, the sub 65 with pre-existing conditions will be in the hopper for next week, and given a month to get their second dose in a couple of weeks. I'm looking at the end of April as long as I'm, I'm going to tolerate. We need to get back to, uh, regular day-to-day business that would give Andrew enough time to get his staff prepared to, to go back to business and the rest of the governmental bodies and the, and committees and stuff to prepare, uh, themselves to function as, as normal. Um, I think Mike, I think is accurate in the fact that numbers are trending in a way that, uh, we're all going to be in a much bit better position. The judge and Andrew will have a lot more clarity on whether or not this really matters from a federal funding standpoint or not. So I'm kind of leaning, I, 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 there's, I'm not, uh, if it's choice between June or nothing, I'm going nothing, but I'll take April for, for the fact that, uh, as long as we've done this, I can, I can live with this for a month yet. So I think the end of March is a little, little too short to actually have from a organizational standpoint to maybe commit to that. But, uh, I think from a healthcare standpoint, we're, we're well on our way to being able to say enough's enough, so.
Uh, Greg, anything?
Um, so I guess I would be, as of now, in support of it. I would follow Alderman-Dukenyak and Alderman-Kirkowski. I don't necessarily see the harm in it. While I do know that numbers are dropping and things are definitely trending in the right direction, um, I feel that we're kind of right in the thick of the vaccination phase, and that's going to continue on. Hopefully not much longer, but, but who knows if there's a, a delay in, in, in getting everybody the vaccine by May 1st. I guess my one question would be if we approve this, is there, uh, ability in place for us to cancel it early?
You agree with one, Greg?
So, so, I mean, I kind of was with, uh, Alderman-Dukenyak the last time, thinking we should extend it till June anyways to begin with. So I, I have no problem going out to June and then reevaluating if everything completely just needs to be opened at that point.
Gotcha. Chris?
Um, I actually would not be in support of it. Um, I think I could live with, uh, I think, uh, end of March is too soon. Um, end of April, I would be okay with. I don't, um, I wouldn't be comfortable with the end of June. Um, I think the other part of that is as you start rolling into, um, Memorial Day and, um, the 4th of July, you've got all these different activities that people are going to want to start planning or plan towards. And, um, if you hold off on this, is that going to impact that type of planning for people that want, that want to start doing that? So that would be one point. Um, so that's where I'm at.
Okay, um, so let it, yeah, go ahead.
This, what, and just globally speaking, just from a just philosophy, you know, philosophical standpoint, government should not, in my opinion, should not be imposing something no, any longer than it absolutely needs to. So just saying June for the hell of it. Constitutionally, just, I mean, people just look at their, at their rights and, and the principle of it. Should not be doing that, just, what's it going to hurt? You should, you should be limiting as, as short as you possibly can impositions on what government's doing.
Excuse me, Alderman-Dukenyak, their district, we're not saying for the hell of it. I mean, so end of June, a, a, a majority of those that are eligible, I think, what is it, over the age of 18 have not received anything as of yet. There's still a, a, a big part of the population.
Or do they need it? Most of them under, under 50 don't need it.
Hang on, Rich has floor.
Um, sh- so why don't we have that? And I know if, if this emergency health, uh, order is a safeguard, but have it in place. But I, I don't think we're, we as government are putting any undue pressure on the population by issuing an order. I guess if anything, it's for safety's sake. I mean, ju- just like with all of our recommendations, uh, that, that we've provided to our community in regards to how to gather, how to operate your business, Ken, none of them have been an order. They've just been recommendations. But so I don't, are, is this health emergency? Is this? Is this, is this any type of order?
This does not have implication necessarily on any capacity or other policy matters you might want to invoke.
If we felt clear, say in early May or late April, and we decided to, we're, we're where we are comfortable with going back to in-person meetings, we could do that. This doesn't prohibit us from doing that.
Okay, good, yeah. So, I, I, again, I don't, I don't think we're doing this for the harm of it.
Dan, I want to, want to come back though, but my other side of this, and Melissa can testify to what the actual ordinance is. If there was no power invested in the ordinance as granting emergency powers to anybody, there'd be no point in having it on the books. We see what emergency orders they're giving the governor in terms of the games he's playing versus the legislature. So, they, they have implications. They're not there for not, you know, they're not there for.
I know, that's, that's an editorial statement that, that they're playing games with. I, I don't think anybody on any side of the aisle is playing games with COVID. I, I think it's a serious issue and they're doing the best they can at all levels.
We can, we can agree to disagree, but games are being played. So, but the emergency order has implication that gives, I think, believes gives the mayor power, gives the health officer power, so.
Well, quickly, I, I think you guys have a pretty good track record though of how that, that's going to play out.
I think, I think you kind of made that point. I mean, even the health officer actually does have the ability to do it and has him exercised that. Mike?
I just want to add, just as a comeback, that's why I wanted to hear the rest of the council, what they had to say. And I think Alderman-Gale brings up a good point with the logistics involved in not, or extending it. I said I, I don't support extending it at all, but he brought up end of April and I can definitely support that because I think, you know, with our, with Andrew and the, and the help of the Health Department and get things in order, that would give you a month or actually six weeks. And I, I think that makes a lot of sense. And, and as a comment too on the, on the vaccination part, the part of the population that's affected by this in the 80-plus percentile is 65 and over. And we're, we're there, we're moving, we're moving the age limit down to 55 already as we speak today. So, the younger population on, yes, they could get sick, definitely. And I, I hate to make this parallel, but I've never said it was like the flu, but for the younger population it is. And, and repercussions are coming from the older people, which are already there on the vaccine. So, that's, I, I like Alderman-Gale's suggestion.
Do we have any figures as to what, in the state of Wisconsin, what part of the 65 and over population has received the vaccination?
We had our local number, I think Darcy had last week, Rich. It was like 61% maybe, is that right?
Was that high?
I couldn't speak to that, I apologize.
I couldn't speak to it.
But I remember, I remember I asked her about the number because I thought it was low relative to what was, I, I, 61 sticks in my brain, but I could be wrong.
Well, again, you know, in regards to the age, I've talked to people as young as in their 20s that have been greatly affected by it or, or younger, not just, you know, 65 and older, things of that nature. We are trending the right way, without a doubt. Vaccines, vaccines are becoming more and more available. You know, there's three reliable brands out there. And as you said, they're opening it up. I just don't see the harm in doing it. We, we haven't exercised those powers, even if they exist within the ordinance, nor do we really intend to. Doesn't stop us from getting back to normal any sooner. It just, again, if we need it, it's in place financially. If there's something buried, we have it. Keep in mind, variant strains are popping up. There's parts of Europe that are doing pretty good and are starting to go the wrong way again, from what I understand, and parts of France and Italy. I'd say it couldn't happen here, but I, I, I don't, I just, I don't really see the big harm in it, whether it's, whether it's the end of April, whether it's the end of June, I don't think it makes one difference. And as far as to Chris's point of planning things, and, and Rich has said this, it's all been recommendations from here on out within the city of Oak Creek either way. And I receive emails all over the place on businesses that take the CDC recommendations a little more serious than others. And again, you know, we haven't been out there and beaten down the doors and do this, do that, so.
And locked anybody down?
No, no, and hopefully we won't have to. Hopefully, we continue to trend in the right way. You know, this, this, you know, Steve brought up the clinic. I went down there on the day they opened. It's great, it is very efficient. You know, kudos to the four, four communities and the health officers for getting together on that. I think it's really helping and making a difference.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I was, Darcy reached out to me about, they had some extra doses on the, the first Monday that they were, but I didn't get the message until after I was past 4 o'clock, so I couldn't take advantage of going for it, which is a, a big bummer, but, because I could have had my dose in it, one of my doses in. But, so I, I'm glad she called and hopefully if something else pops up then in the future, she'll reach back out.
Right, and hopefully those things continue for everybody that so chooses the vaccination, so.
Just one final comment.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
On, to support one of Steve's statements. I became eligible age in the, the first of this month and tried like heck to go anywhere to get a vaccination and had no luck whatsoever. As we got into the, the second week of the month, the distribution system obviously within our state has, has improved significantly because not only did I have the, the healthcare system that I, I'm a patient of, schedule me, like you said, Guzzi. Darcy and, and the Health Department crew contacted me as well about missed appointments and the availability. And there, there was one other healthcare system that contacted as well. So, things are, I think, things are, are getting much, much better with the distribution system. Their efficiencies are incredible, so, yeah, hopefully we get through this, Ken, so that we, we can call it a day at the end of April. Give you one last area?
Just want to, yeah. At the last Board of Health meeting, we talked about the fact that we didn't want any doses to get wasted at that clinic in Cudahy. And Darcy said that they had, they maintain a list of people they can call on short notice to make sure they don't have anything go to waste. And, and as a matter of fact, a week ago, Tuesday, I got a call at like about, you know, can you be here in 20 minutes? And I was there. And so, it was, it was nice that she's doing that and she's making sure nothing goes. All four of those departments are making sure that none of those doses go to waste. So, I fought like heck to, to get a shot because I was, I'm only 63 and, but I'm a type 2 diabetic and I just could not, even the VA wouldn't give me a shot as a retired veteran. So, it was, it was a crappy feeling until I got that call. So, I, I, having said all what I had to say and listen to everybody else, I would go with, with Ken's suggestion of April as a, kind of a.
Nothing precludes us from at the end of April or mid-April doing this again if we.
True. And, and you never know, as, as Andrew said, how many times do we know that federal money always comes with federal, federal strings and you just don't know what's going to happen? So, I hate to take that chance for 3-point-some million dollars.
Just a quick thought, this probably bother you that I'm going to say this. I think things would have to drastically change to even bring this back and not let it die a natural death. That's a terrible analogy. However, if you guys, if, if you could just do May 5th, so we have the opportunity, if we need it on May 4th, council meeting to convene, I think that would probably be the most symmetrical way to, to go about it.
That's fair, guys.
Then there's no lapses.
I think we'll be good. Okay, let's get a motion and we'll go on to community development after that.
Alright, Gil, move to approve resolution 1223-031620, extending the public health emergency in the city of Oak Creek in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus affected April 1, 2021 through May 4th? Andrew, May 5th?
May 5th.
May 5th, 2021.
One oh second.
Roll call?
Alderman-Dukneak?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
And item 12 is part of community development. It's consideration of the resolution approving a certified survey map submitted by Dave Decker, Decker Properties. For the properties at 8100, 8146 South 27th Street and 8100 South Orchard Way. And once again, we have Doug Seymour, Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mayor. Council passed a resolution vacating the right-of-way for the old alignment of Orchard Way. This certified survey map now takes that new alignment and dedicates that right-of-way. And as part of that, since we are actually splitting the parcels, it creates two parcels. So, proposed Lot 1, which is about 17.2 acres, and Lot 2, which is a little more than 6 acres on the other side of the Orchard Way extension, would be the subject of a future planning development for a multifamily development. But this survey map, again, places that right-of-way back on the map in the correct configuration. So, the planning commission has also reviewed this certified survey map and they have recommended their approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Doug? Anybody? Greg, anything from you that's your district?
Oh, no questions or concerns?
Okay. Seeing none, motion?
Lorick moves that the council adopt resolution number 12237-031621, a resolution approving a certified survey map submitted by David Decker, Decker Properties, Inc., for the properties at 8100 and 8146 South 27th Street and 8100 South Orchard Way.
Let's go second.
Roll call?
Alderman-Toman?
Right.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Duke-Niack?
Aye.
And item 13 is Public Works and Utilities. It's consideration of a motion to award the Oak Creek Skate Park Improvements to the contractor to the lowest responsible bidder of Hunger Skate Parks LLC. With us, I believe Ted Johnson, you with us?
Yep, sure am.
Okay, Ted, it's all yours.
Well, right now, we're actually pretty excited about this, this project. We've been working on it for quite some time. We've had the Parks Commission, Lori Miller has been working pretty hard on this engineering, has, has had a hand in, in helping us get this all together. And we finally got this plan and, and got it out to bid. If you recall, we originally requested funding for just some replacement ramps and Jeff Went and I went and looked at them up in Tulsa and were not happy with those at all. And this is what that plan has turned into. We had a pretty extensive vetting process for, for contractors when, when this was put out to bid. There was a lot of, I guess hoops you would say they had to jump through in order to even qualify to bid for the project. And that's one of the reasons that we had, in addition to taking all the alternates, why we kind of had a, a blind opening, I guess you would call it, with not being able to see who the contractors were. So, it wouldn't have affected our, our choices when it came to the alternates. We were excited to get five bidders and we got one bidder that is quite a bit lower than some of the others and, and is definitely within our budget in order for us to take all three of the alternates that we had put in. Hunger Skate Parks. I have spoken to our, our vendor that, that designed the, the project. He speaks highly of them. I've done a little research on the Hunger Skate Parks LLC. They've done over 60 skate parks in the United States. A couple of them in Minnesota, a couple of them in Indiana. This will be their first in Wisconsin. And they're spoken highly of by both our vendor that was working on the project along with some of the other people that, that have had parks built by them. So, we're excited to get this going and it'll definitely be an improvement at Abundshine Park. We're hoping to get this kicked off and have it hopefully opened mid-July and have a big grand opening and a kickoff party for it. I know that, that our vendor that designed it is, is going to help us with the kickoff party. And so, like I'm saying, we're pretty excited about getting it going.
Great, thank you, Ted. Opening up for questions, comments? Ken, got some?
Yeah, Ted, I, I missed that, sorry. When do you expect to start this? How long should construction take?
We're hoping to have a pre-construction meeting here within the next probably week or so and get it kicked off right away. Public Works is going to go over and once, once we have a date set for start of construction, we're going to basically demolish the old pieces, which are just wood, and then, and then snow fence off the area and get it started. But we do have a completion date in here that's in sometime in July. So, we're hoping to have this by, by mid-July opened up.
Anyone else?
I know that the Parks Commission has been working on it diligently and they're, they're excited to, to get this thing going. The only thing I would have a question on is, and I don't know, I don't even know how to phrase the question, but if someone gets hurt here, how, you know, and they want to try to sue us, is, you know, is there anything with the skate park that we need to be, you know, considering from a surface or anything like that? I don't know, I just, I'm bringing it up because I know we had a couple of hiccups here and there, but.
Chris, I really don't think it would be different. Melissa could probably answer better than I could. But, I mean, I don't think it would be any different than what we currently have.
Okay. All right, that's all I need to hear, thank you. But made a lot better.
Correct.
Thank you.
Melissa's going to comment on it.
I think this council has certainly reviewed matters that would relate to something that might occur where a claim could be made. Hopefully, that doesn't occur. I think the fact of it is, from what Ted's talked about in terms of our consultant, in terms of the specifications, and frankly, with any process, a very in-depth and robust, I guess I would say, review at a number of levels to ensure that the materials and the installation are all done as they should be. And to that extent, hopefully, we will just be moving forward and hearing about the good aspects here. But I think that recreational immunity is what you might be alluding to.
Yes, and I, I'm not trying to be a Debbie Downer here. I just, it just, because it, it just seems, we know how much people love to skateboard, so I just, I just want to make sure we're making it right, so thank you very much.
Sure. Anyone else? Nothing? Ted, just two quick questions. Is it going to be all concrete or will it come out and be asphalt? And then, secondly, would be lit? Because years ago, there was a young man from the community, you know, he would like to have seen lights down there.
This will be all concrete with the exception of a, a couple of the features, like, obviously, alternate one is a metal rail. But this will be built on the existing concrete slab. And this project, although I do recall the, the young man that came and requested the lights, we don't have money in this particular budget for the lights, but that's something that we can continue to look at in the future. I know that in order for us to get lighting for this, we had talked about having the trench from Drexel Avenue. And right now, we're just kind of coming in under budget on this, on this project with all the alternates. And this one particular project doesn't have lights, although the parks are closed at dusk. So, I, I think that would be even something that maybe we should have the Parks Commission even maybe talk about that again to see, you know, how late we want to have our parks open. But an answer to your question, no, we don't have lights for this at the present time.
Okay, thank you. It definitely is a popular amenity within the city of Oak Creek and I know a lot of people have been looking forward to this, so. If there's nothing further, motion?
Lorick moves that the council.
Kirkowski, make a motion to award the Oak Creek Skate Park Improvements contract to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, Hunger.
to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, Hunger Skate Parks LLC for their bid price of two-hundred-forty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Lorick will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gale?
Hi.
Kuzikowski?
Hi.
Kirkowski?
Hi.
Lorick?
Hi.
Duke, Neak?
Hi.
Toman?
Hi.
And item fourteen is consideration of a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-one sanitary rehabilitation project and award construction contract to the lowest responsible bidder, responsible bidder visu, vis sewer based on a bid amount of six-hundred-and-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-one dollars and ninety cents. And we have Brian Johnston from the utility with us. Hey, Brian?
Good evening. So this is a sanitary sewer rehab project. Um, if you're familiar with Pacer ratings for the roads, uh, the sewer system uses NASCO, which is the National Association of Sewer Service Companies, uh, to, it's a rating system that we use, it's an industry standard. So it's based on our camera work that we do of all their sewer system. So this project is twenty-five locations throughout the city. Mainly it is a lining project. So you just, uh, cure it in place, lining on the sewer system to correct defects, um, leaks, cracks, roots, that sort of thing, and the pipes. And we do have a few locations of spot repairs and one relay section that we'll be working on. So it's just rehab project for our sewer system.
Questions for Brian?
Brian, uh, sorry, this is, uh, Ken Gale. Can, can you let the rest of the folks know, uh, this is generally in, uh, in the annual event from what I recall, so.
Yes, it is. Um, this is actually the third year that we have done it. Um, last year's program, the budget, uh, I should say the bids came in higher than what was budgeted. So we had to revamp that, uh, system. Uh, we had a lot of relay sections that we were trying to do last year and the numbers just came in too high. So, uh, missed a year last year, but this is the third year we've done a, a rehab project here and just maintaining the system.
And, and these are generally, Brian, the areas that we're rehabbing are found with the, the camering work that, uh, the utility does on a regular basis?
Absolutely. So all, all this is determined from the, the cammering that they do. And when the camera operator finds something, he has a rating system that he uses, um, to code that. So then we're able to go through and determine which sections need to be looked at.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, motion.
Gale move to approve the two thousand twenty-one sanitary rehabilitation project and award the construction contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder vis sewer based on the bid amount of six-hundred-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-one dollars and ninety cents.
Kuzikowski, I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kuzikowski?
Hi.
Kirkowski?
Hi.
Lorick?
Hi.
Duke, Neak?
Hi.
Toman?
Hi.
Gale?
Item fifteen is engineering and its consideration of a resolution accepting the two thousand twenty annual report for the Oak Creek WPDES stormwater. Um, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so this is really a continuation of, of what, uh, engineering, um, brings before the council. Every year at this time, and it is, uh, uh, the, asking that the council, uh, approves the report that is, uh, compiled by stormwater, uh, staff and, and in the engineering department. Uh, it's the, uh, required annual report, uh, that the city has under its NR two sixteen permit. That is, uh, our, the city's stormwater permit through, uh, the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. Basically, the report summarizes, uh, the stormwater, the many stormwater management activities, um, uh, through the year, uh, that the, the, the city, uh, undertakes to minimize sediment transfer, uh, downstream, downstream torrent waterways. Um, so this, uh, the stormwater management, uh, processes are, uh, water quality based. So it's, it's the maintenance, uh, and inspections of our, of our retention ponds. There's nineteen regional detention ponds throughout the city. Um, street sweeping is, is a big, uh, uh, measure that, that, uh, that's just a lot of bang for our buck on, uh, achieving our goals. Catch basin cleaning, um, our erosion control permitting and inspection process, uh, for the developing sites. Uh, and more recently, some, uh, green infrastructure, uh, projects that have been going in, uh, and permitted through the department. So, um, nothing out of the ordinary kind of business as usual, uh, that we've been doing, uh, since, since the early two thousands. Um, but it is a lot of work and our DPW crew, uh, just, just does a great job, uh, in this, uh, this endeavor. So, uh, I, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might see in, in the report. So there's a, a table on page sixteen that has, contains, uh, some of the metrics. Uh, that's the tonnages of the street sweepings, uh, catch basins, retention pond, outlet structure cleanings, uh, oil collected, waste oil from automobiles, uh, cubic yards of leaves, uh, that have been collected. So really, any questions you might have, I'd be happy to try to answer for you.
Questions for Mike?
Hey, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Um, Mike, I have some reservations at diving into this comment, uh, again, but it has to do, do with, uh, leaf collection by the city. Now, I know we don't have it and there's no, there's no report to, to say how much it would cost if we did it for a certain amount of time. Uh, but one of the arguments that I, I've had or residents have said to me because, you know, some people would like it is, is whether or not if we had leaf collection, would that, uh, reduce the amount of leaves that are in the catch basins? In other words, we just, folks just let it, you know, go into the street? And I've got some residents who rake it into the street anyways. So, offhand, and I know you weren't prepared for this question, but do you think, do you think there would be a reduction in, in, in the, uh, the amount of, uh, leaves and that were, uh, taken out of the catch basins if, if the city picked up the leaves? Versus taking it to, to the recycling yard like we do now? If you don't, if you really don't know, that's okay because I kind of sprung this on you by, by surprise.
Well, I think, uh, you know, very clearly, if, if, if the, the city had a, a, a citywide and continuous, um, uh, service of, of collecting leaves, then yes, if you were getting to the catch basin, so there's less sediment there. Uh, and of course, it is better for, uh, waterways. Um, very debatable, uh, if, uh, taking on, uh, uh, a huge effort like that rather than the, the few times of the year that they do it. Um, if, if it's, if it's, if you get in the, the value for the money put into that. And I would, you know, I, I guess I would hazard a guess that no, you don't. Um, so that's just another one of these balances that, that, that the city would need to really debate and research to, to see if, you know, how that would shake out. But I suspect, uh, it would, we'd be hard pressed to, to make that, uh, taking that on worthwhile.
Thank you. Excellent, anyone else? Seeing none, motion?
Gale move to approve resolution one-two-two-three-two-dash-zero-three-one-six-two-one, accepting the two thousand twenty annual report for Oak Creek's WPDES stormwater NR two sixteen permit.
Kuzikowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski?
Hi.
Lorick?
Hi.
Duke, Neak?
Hi.
Toman?
Hi.
Gale?
Hi.
Kuzikowski?
Hi.
And item sixteen is our license committee will turn that over to Alderman Kukowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I trust everybody's had an opportunity to review the, uh, common council report for tonight's meeting. Does anybody have any questions, cares or concerns? All right, seeing none, Kukowski make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the March sixteen, two thousand twenty-one License Committee Report.
Duke, Neak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick?
Hi.
Duke, Neak?
Hi.
Toman?
Hi.
Gale?
Hi.
Kuzikowski?
Hi.
Kirkowski?
Hi.
And item seventeen is our vendor summary report ending March tenth, twenty twenty-one. If you'd please take a look. If you have any questions, um, please feel free to ask. Any appropriate person should be able to provide you an answer. There are no questions, um, motion please.
Thank you, Mayor. Gale move to approve the March ten, two thousand twenty-one vendor summary report in the amount of five-hundred-thirty-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars seventy-eight cents.
Kuzikowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Duke, Neak? Toman?
Hi.
Gale?
Hi.
Kuzikowski?
Hi.
Kirkowski?
Hi.
Lorick?
Hi.
And just before we hit adjournment, uh, I'd just like to take a second to recognize March is International Women's Month. Um, it is a month set aside to recognize all the contributions women have made in society. And, uh, in the city is no exception. Every department is touched by a female just about in the entire city. Uh, sitting with us tonight is our city attorney and our city clerk, um, our ASA pool naturally, uh, library, health, police, fire, engineering, DPW, water, municipal court, treasurer, tourism, and the list goes on and on. If I missed anybody, I'd like to congratulate all these women and thank them for the contributions they made, both past and present, to the city of Oak Creek. Um, again, the city could not function without your time, talent, and service. So again, enjoy your month, ladies. So, adjournment please.
Kukowski make a motion to adjourn. Neak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman?
Hi.
Gale?
Hi.
Kuzikowski?
Hi.
Kirkowski?
Hi.
Lorick?
Hi.
Duke, Neak?
Hi.
And thank you to the rest of our staff as well.
Okay, Mayor Dan, if I could have just a moment.
Sure, certainly.